Alright, so we are now recording. Everybody is in meeting. Dennis, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, Everett, thank you very much. Alright, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 2021 Meeting of the Brighton Zoning Board of Appeals. Just a couple little housekeeping things. If you would, please keep your camera off if you are someone who is going to be speaking later in the meeting when there's an item that you're interested in, but until then, if you would. And then also if someone during that period of time needs to speak, then they could raise their hand and we could view that and then Everett could help us out to acknowledge you and allow you to speak. These meetings go along pretty well. We did quite a few of them in Zoom, so I think you should see no trouble in, you know, getting your thoughts out there and the board members able to ask questions and us to move along in efficient manner. So at this point, I'd like to formally open the October zoning board meeting for the town of Brighton. And Rick, was the meeting properly advertised, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it was advertised in the September 30th, 2021 edition of the Daily Record.
Okay, very good. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Primo.
Here.
Ms. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Here.
Mr. Mites.
Here.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt. Please let the record show that Ms. Schmidt is not present.
Okay, very good. Okay, so would you like to talk about anything that's part of the agenda this evening?
I have nothing for the members unless somebody has a question regarding any of the applications.
Okay, that's good. I guess we've got six applications and then one piece of old business, yes?
Right, and we do have the August meeting minutes.
Yes, yes, we'll do those forthwith. I know Judy's burning over there. Good, they're good. Got her finger right on the switch, so.
I got it all.
Alright, very good.
On page 12, line 6, the name is Mr. Shea, S-A-E-A. On page 43, line 18, please delete the A and B at the end of the sentence. And that's it. They were good, good, good.
Wow.
I know.
I, I also have a change.
Yes, go ahead, Ed.
On page 43, the third line, it should be Meadowbrook Drive, not drove.
Okay.
Typo, yeah.
Yep, okay. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, well, then we can have a motion for the minutes.
So approved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Motion to approve with corrections. Mr. Primo?
Hi.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Same.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Hi.
Motion to approve the August minutes with corrections varies.
Okay. Again, just, just for those on the conference call, the way we like to generally handle this is that we'll call your application, you'll present what you would like to. The board members will ask any questions. And then we'll see if anyone on the call would like to speak regarding your application. If they do, we'll allow them all to do so. And then we'll close the public hearing, move on to the next application. Excuse me, and then at the end, we'll move through them one by one. And you're welcome to stay and listen. There is no more discussion with applicants during that part, but you're certainly free to listen. If you choose to listen, then you'll see the result because we vote on everything tonight unless something gets tabled. And if you don't want to stay, then you can call Mr. DiStefano in the building and zoning office tomorrow, and he can let you know what the result of your application was. Okay, so let's roll, Rick.
Application 10 A O 121, application of Cliff Wagner, Land Tech Surveying and Planning Agent, and Trinity Reformed Church, owner of property located at 909 North Landing Road for area various in section 203 dash 2.1 C1A and 203 dash 9B1 to allow, to allow a church building to have a 41.7 foot side setback after subdivision of one lot into two, remove the minimum 100 feet with setback required by code, all sky and application plans on file.
Alright, who do we have speaking for 10 A O 1?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Sharaba with Land Tech. I'm pitch heading for Cliff tonight.
Okay, very good, sir. Just give an address, please.
Sure, I'm with, my office is located 1105 Ridgeway Avenue, Rochester, 14615.
Okay, sir, then go ahead and proceed.
We are representing the Trinity Reformed Church that is located on the west side of Landing Road, right between Penhurst Road and Stratford Road. This is a 2.6 acre parcel of land that is zoned RLB residential low density. And what we're really asking for tonight is to subdivide the existing house that borders the Stratford Road area and create a three tenths of an acre parcel around the home. And then that, and then the rest, rest of the church will remain as is. So basically, the church would like to sell the house. In doing so, that we've made the lot meet all the size, width, and depth requirements. But the sectional code within the town requires any church to be at least 100 feet from a property line in this zoning district, which is quite impossible in this situation. If you look at the map, the, the corner of the church and the corner of the garage of the house are approximately 85 feet apart. So we are forced to ask for a variance for the side setback of the 41.7 feet. Also, in the subdivision process, we're creating a ingress egress, so the driveway will remain as is to be used in common between both parcels. So we feel that, that this application and this request for the variance is in the character of the neighborhood due to the fact that we are not altering any physical features of the property. It's all going to remain the same. We're not proposing any new structures, any new driveway access or anything such as that. Well, we also feel that, you know, that it could be considered significant because we're more than 50% deviation of code. But as I explained, there's only 85 feet between the properties and it really can't be configured in any other way that wouldn't require more variances. So again, we, it's going to stay in the character of the neighborhood. We're not altering any physical features of the neighborhood, and it's all going to remain the same. It is self-created, but I think there is a need, possibly economic need for churches these days to recoup some money. And I think the sale of this house will be a benefit, a great benefit to the church itself. So that's a very quick overview of what we're asking for as it relates to the variance and the goals of the church itself. We are on the planning board agenda, the next planning board agenda for subdivision approval pending hopefully your approval of this variance.
Very good. Okay, just a couple of quick things and then we'll go around for some other questions. So the, the issue with the driveway, then, you know, you feel and the real estate folks of the world feel that this is a workable situation with the driveway to remain the way it is and be shared by these properties?
If you're asking me, Mr. Chairman, easements are a common part of land development use. Well, I think that they should be used in harmony. I don't see any issue. The church will work with an agreement before selling the property and make sure that that's clarified as far as maintenance and snow removal. So I will share that with the planning board at that time when we get that easement documentation put together.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's not uncommon, just, you know, the that were, was there any discussion about doing anything differently than that as far as what you considered with the church related to it versus that scenario?
We felt that we could, we could have kind of lopped off the church's access to that road to Stratton Lane and made a, you know, for, for lack of a better term, put a, put a gate across the driveway and just use it for the house. But we feel that the church is going to need that for traffic flow during service. And I think it's, I don't think it'd be a great idea for the church and/or emergency vehicles. So I think it's going to work well, having that open access to both parties.
Okay, very good. Okay, board members, questions for?
Yes, the house is going to remain a house of residential use, and the church isn't going to be changing in any way for use or physically with any additions or anything like that?
No, not that I'm aware about at this time.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, Judy is a, you know, residentially zoned lot, so if there was any future idea to do something differently, then obviously it's.
They have to come to, yeah.
Us or the town board or the planning board or whatever they were trying to.
Just wondered though if they had any thoughts.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Their question. Yep. And does anyone else have any other questions for the applicant?
I'm curious.
Go ahead, Heather.
I'm wondering if the portion that will be the shared drive, do church parishioners traditionally park along that portion or just in the bigger asphalt area?
Yeah, that's a tough question for me. I don't have a historic knowledge of the church service. I, I think there's plenty of room. We have two rather large parking lots, one on the west side and one south of the church, so I don't see an issue with parking along that route.
Okay. Alright, alright. Any other questions by any of the other board members?
Dennis, I just wanted to Can you hear me, Dennis?
Oh, yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. Just stick your hand up. It's always the safest way, but go ahead. There it is.
So just to share with the board members, and I don't think Mr. Sharaba knows this necessarily, but the church building itself has been designated as a historic landmark in the town. So there could be no changes to that without approval of the Historic Preservation Commission. And when, and, and this was a fairly recent designation. When the Historic Preservation Commission considered designation, there was an express discussion about this very idea of subdividing off the house because it did not have historic value and doing that in such a way so that the church could sell off that house that was no longer being used by the church as, as a, I think it was originally a rectory.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I think, you know, as was noted here, I mean, the pressure on many religious institutions to try to carve out some of their real estate investments to try to keep the congregations vibrant is certainly a common thought and problem. So it seems pretty straightforward that why they would want to do this. So, but thank you for telling us that. Alright, is there any other questions by the board members? Or are there? Okay, very good. Is, is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then let's close the public hearing and move on to the next application.
Thank you. Application, application 10 A O 221, application James and Christina Colberg, owners of property located at 401 Brook Lawn Drive for area variances in section 205 dash 2, allow one, the front porch addition to extend nine feet into the 40 foot front setback required by code and to allow a garage addition to extend four feet to the 40 foot front setback required by code, all sky and application plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for application number two?
I'm Paul Minor, the architect for James and Christina Colberg. I live at 111 Avril Avenue in Rochester, 14620.
Okay, Paul, welcome. Thank you, and go ahead and give us your thoughts.
Thank you. As the application before you states, this variance request is part of a greater addition renovation project during which the Colbergs would like to add a front porch to their house. As noted in the application, front porches, front porches are a vestige of older homes that are once again becoming popular and newer homes. Handled right, they enhance the house and can increase its value. But they also convey literally and figuratively a sense of community. We are not walled up inside, but welcome interaction with you. They also improve safety on the street, the message that yes, there are eyes on this street. Unfortunately, so many homes built in the last 50 to 60 years, and this house was built in 1957, were built to the max, right up to the zoning setback lines in the front and the sides. Hence, the need for variance for this porch and the front yard. This was not self-created hardship, but one created when the house was originally built. As to the request for variance for a small corner of a new garage, the proposed addition is to provide the Colbergs' adult children, continuing to live at home, more personal space and additional space for entertaining, including accommodation of a large pool table from the turn of last century. The best opportunity is beyond, behind, and within part of the existing garage. But because of a large tree behind the present garage that the Colbergs want to retain, constructing a portion of this garage further towards the front of the house seemed reasonable. Given the unique shape of the lot on a cul-de-sac, almost all of the garage can be built within the front yard setback requirement, except one small corner is shown, approximately 17 square feet. Building any closer to the side yard to avoid this request is not possible, again, because the existing house and the garage are already right up to the side yard setback line. Being the first house, as you enter this cul-de-sac and the side yard line extending so far to the front next to an adjoining property which actually faces on Westfall Road, one will hardly know what seems like it unusually close to the street. Like the porch breaking up the two-story wall of present garage with a bedroom above, with this garage, one-story garage extension will add more character and interest, not unlike the other houses around it in this small four-lot subdivision.
Okay, alright, so just quickly, can you go through all any other alternatives that maybe were reviewed in the design process that could have maybe achieved this without the variance?
As for the porch, there really is no alternative. I mean, a 40 feet requirement goes to the second floor overhang facing the street. As to the garage, it would be possible to pull it back and maybe rotate the addition in the back, but what we're trying to do is create a flow from the existing house naturally into the, the addition. You'll note that there is a bathroom there and actually to, as you look at the drawing, to the right of the bathroom is about a five-foot square nook in their kitchen, which is their office, and you'll see a room in the addition that is, is also the space for their office to move, plus the entertainment space in the back. We could rotate and pull the garage back. We lose that through circulation into the addition. And we then begin to obstruct the view from out the kitchen. It's a lovely backyard with a patio back there, and, and we hate to lose that.
Okay, very good. Alright, so board members, questions, please? Any questions for Mr. Minor?
I apologize if you aren't, this is Robert Wright. I apologize if you already said this, but the, the porch is completely open?
Yes, it's, it's got a roof. It's got a roof. We're debating whether it'll have a railing or not.
Okay, thank you.
Member Schwartz?
Yes.
Are you losing any trees in the front yard because of the porch?
No.
Okay. And I assume then the shed in the backyard is coming down for that addition in the back, correct?
It's being moved.
Oh, it's being moved?
Yes, I checked with Mr. DiStefano, and he said that so long as we're more than five feet from a side or rear property line, basically it can go where we want it, best want it.
Okay, alright. Other questions, please?
A comment?
Yes.
Okay, you were describing, you know, some of the interior spaces. We have a drawing that really doesn't show much. And I was wondering whether you had any elevations to give us a better idea of what this might be looking like, because it's hard to really, you know, from what we were given, really tell what it is that you wish to accomplish. I mean, I understand the porch, and I, and I'm all in favor. We put one in, it's the best thing you'll ever do, so I think that's great. But do you have any other drawings that, that we could see to give us a better idea?
I do. I thought of including them with this. I'm preparing with a favorable vote by you. I'm preparing the application to go before the Architectural Review Board at the end of this month. And they obviously will have great question about how we're handling this. Garage addition is just a one-story addition. The, the bedroom above it is two stories, and it's basically in line with the face of the house.
And that's exist, that bedroom, second floor bedroom is existing now, correct? So if we go over the picture of the property.
Yeah, there you go.
So basically, you're saying that the garage addition is just going to be a one-story coming out from the existing garage space?
Correct. And it, it will be a gable roof facing you, which again breaks up the, the lawn
Right.
face.
And, and similar, a similar pitch, Paul?
Similar.
Okay.
We got, we got a couple of bedroom windows we're dealing with, but it'll be pretty close to the same.
Okay, and, and similar materials, so it'll look like it was, you know.
Yes.
sided the same and the same roofing materials.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, does that address your concern, Judy?
You're muted. Judy, you're muted. Judy?
Judy, you gotta unmute yourself, please. Now, isn't that Karen's thing? Alright, let's, let's move along. Any other questions? Oh, there you go, Judy.
Yeah.
Do you understand what the, that that's the best available?
I remember in past applications, we haven't seen, you know, full plans, and it's hard to make a really good decision. And so that's why I was asking. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate your concern and knew this was a zoning, sort of a flat land issue. In the future, I would include more interior information.
Yeah, I think Paul, just to assist you, if you did this, yeah, I, I don't, we don't need detailed plans, but if there's just an elevation or whatever, it just arrests any concerns that people have about how, how does it fit into the character of the neighborhood? That's, that's pretty much it, but it doesn't need specific architectural detailing, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright, other questions from any of the members? Okay, great. Alright, so at this point then, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding the application for 401 Brook Lawn? Okay, there being none on the public hearing's calls.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Application 10 A O 321, application of Tom Johnson, agent, and Mark Benoit, owner of property located at 40 Ambassador Drive for area variances in section 205 dash 2 to 1, allowing a attached garage addition to extend 20.3 feet into the existing 24.3 foot rear setback. Where a 60-foot rear setback is required by code and to allow a front addition to extend three feet into the existing 49.96 one, excuse me, 49.96 foot one setback where 60 foot front setback is required by code, all sky and application plans on file.
Okay, very good. Who do we have speaking, please?
This is Tom Johnson. I'm the designer on the project.
Okay, Dan, welcome. And how about an address, sir?
My address is 73 Nunde Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14610.
Okay, great. Go ahead and let us know what you got.
Okay, the client, Mark Benoit, can't be here. He is in London on business. So I'm representing him. But basically, what's happening, as is stated on the application, the current house is about 2,700 square feet. And they're a family with two children and two dogs and visiting parents, and so they're hoping to expand a little bit and maybe have a family room and maybe have a first floor primary new bedroom. And then in order to get that, we thought we would push a garage off the back, hidden from the streets, you wouldn't see it. And this is a very unique situation because this house actually shares a driveway with number 50 Ambassador Drive. And so my idea is to keep the garage addition as far away from number 50 as possible, so that, you know, there's still room for everybody to park and maneuver around the driveway. In order to get just a 20-foot wide garage, we would have to be three feet from the back property line. And the lot behind this house is a very long lot that extends to East Avenue. The house behind the, behind this house is, is very far to the north. So really, behind this house, it's really just basically wilderness and a bit of lawn from the, the house on East Avenue. And the current dining room is 12 feet by 13 feet, which is very small by American standards. So I thought, let's just try and push it out, just even a three-foot addition off the front would be, you know, give them some elbow room. So the variance that we're applying for is for the garage going to the back and the dining room addition off to the front. These are quick sketches, the, that kind of the sketch that you're showing right now. The dining room is, this is not a perfect design. This is just to show you just generally where we're going. Is you can see at the left of that upper elevation is the, some kind of glass addition off the front that would be the addition to the dining room. And to the right of that upper elevation would be the addition, it's not in the variance application, but that would be the new primary bedroom, and we would actually be reusing the antique windows or, you know, the existing windows of the house, so that would keep it looking as part of the neighborhood. The other elevations, just based, the, that middle elevation on the left shows the back of the house, which is not applicable to today's conversation. And then at the bottom, you can see just a one, a flat roof, one, all cedar clad stained dark brown to match the dark brown of the trim of the house. Classically detailed. That would be the addition coming off the back of the house. And as I said, it, it's almost not visible from the street. So that is the general outline of what we're doing. Or what we would like to do.
Okay, great. Alright. So, board members, questions for Mr. Johnson?
This is member, I think it just makes sense to kind of talk about these two separately, just for question discussion purposes. So for the dining room addition that jumped into the front yard setback or further jumps out than, than the current property does. Did you consider pushing that dining out to the south instead of to the east, which wouldn't increase the setback?
Um, I suppose that's possible. I think if you walk to the property and you would probably agree that it would, it probably would work better on the front of the house. If you look in the bottom left-hand corner of the page that you're showing right now, you can see a photograph of the house. And that front window, it's not quite visible. If you can scroll up a hair.
You can move it up there, guys.
The other direction, I'm sorry.
Yep.
See the dotted line around that black hole? So that black hole is the existing window. So I think in a way, what we're trying to do is take a little bit of the, the detail of the current exist, the, the detailing of the current house and kind of give it a copper roof and, you know, sort of make that area a little bit more charming. Um, the other interesting thing about the setbacks, if you look on the, the site plan on the upper right-hand corner, I don't know if you can see, but there are two dotted lines basically running right through the center of the house. The one over to the right, there you go. You see those red lines? That shows the 60-foot setback from the front and the 60-foot setback from the back. So if somebody were wanting to build a new house here, their house would be about four feet wide. So I think asking to stick out about, you know, three feet into the front lawn seemed appropriate considering the situation.
Okay. Andrea?
The other question I have, just regarding this front garage, or I'm sorry, the front dining room. Are the setbacks in this area consistent such that this would be, you know, one of the larger variances granted in this neighborhood?
Um, is that directed to me?
Yes.
I mean, if you walk around this neighborhood, you'll see almost every single house is but an addition off the back of the garage. So I'm not sure.
No, I'm referencing the front yard setbacks.
Okay, I'm sorry. You repeat the question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so just wondering if in this neighborhood, and again, I, I was looking at Google Earth images, it looks like all of the homes have a somewhat consistent setback, but that may not be true. So that's what I'm wondering about the front yard setback. Is it relatively consistent? Is it relatively consistent or is this going to be one of the, the larger variances granted for front yards in this neighborhood?
I, okay, so the backstory to this is that I used to live in this house. And, um, and I used to walk my dog around this neighborhood all the time. I don't know that there is a consistent uh, setback to the, this neighborhood. Um, that is a good question. If, uh, the properties are all fairly large, this is probably the smallest house on Ambassador Drive and probably has a fairly good sized front yard relative to other houses. So I'm not really sure that that is relevant. I, I don't want to say it's irrelevant. I'm sorry, that, that's disrespectful. But I guess I'm not, I'm misunderstanding maybe what you're getting at here.
So one of the questions we have to answer as the board is whether or not this variance changes the character of the neighborhood. And so part of this, when you ask for a front yard setback is us determining whether or not if all of the homes have similar setback and we grant a variance to have one be significant, so sit significantly differently on a yard than the other. That could change the character of the neighborhood and then we're not able to issue a variance for this.
I, I understand your point. Okay. Um, well, it's a very unique neighborhood. This is a street full of extremely large houses with, uh, with um, every house is, is quite different from the other, uh.
Excuse me. Okay. Well, maybe, maybe.
I guess I don't have the right, I don't have the proper answer to that. I don't thi, I think that this being one of the smallest houses on the street is, by adding this three-foot bump out on the front does not at all affect the neighborhood, considering all the other houses are considerably larger and have a lot more going on than this house does. Does that make sense?
Okay.
I mean, that, of course, is subjective, correct? I mean, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just one, just the one other point, maybe you could address it a little different way is to suggest that because of the mass of this house, if you look at, as you point out, some of the larger homes on there that, you know, whether this one is three feet one way or the other, would, would you suggest that this, would you suggest the impact of, in your opinion of the three-foot uh, incursion, I guess would be?
I mean, in my personal opinion, I don't know that anyone would notice that. It's, it's, it's kind of an irrelevant, uh, addition relative to what's going on in all the other houses. I mean, if you look at Danny Wegman's house down the street, which has turrets and gables and you know, maybe his setback is within what the setback should be. But there's a lot more going on in that house than adding a three-foot day window on the front of this house, in my opinion.
Very good. All right. Other questions for Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Judy?
Go ahead, Judy.
Yes, the house is currently twenty, a little over twenty-six hundred square feet. What will your new square footage be when you're done? Do you know?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's about three thousand two hundred and seventy-five, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
And that falls within the, uh, the allowable, the LFA allowable area.
What I wondered, okay, thank you.
Very good. Okay, other questions?
One thing I just want to make sure is on the record with, with respect to the rear uh, garage extension. So number one, uh, and, and maybe this is, um, Rick, you confirming if this were a detached garage, it would be to be its location?
That, that was gonna be my question, Andrea, to Tom, is that, um, you could construct a detached garage in that, kind of in that back corner, meeting your five-foot setbacks um, without needing any type of variances, correct?
It's probably true, although I, if I lived in number fifty Ambassador Drive, I don't think I would be too happy about that. Because this is a shared driveway. And that would be completely, you know, infringing on their sense of space, not to mention their sense of parking. Um, it would make snow plowing more difficult. Like there are, there are numerous reasons why it would, it would be inconvenient to put it there. And so the reason that I chose this location is because I really thought by putting it behind the house, when you're, when you're going by the house, you don't even really see it. And by giving it a lot of space between number fifty, the, the, the two, currently the garage from number fifty faces the garage from number forty. And so, you know, there is, I don't want to say congestion, you know, it's, it's just two single-family houses, but you want to make sure that there's elbow room for everyone to drive around. So I'm trying to be very, uh, aware of that situation. By putting the garage where I put it, it's actually pulling the parking area for number forty Ambassador away from the parking area of number fifty Ambassador, which I think gives everybody a little bit more room.
Okay, very good. Uh, how about that begs another question, you know, what, what, what do the folks next door have to say? Have we?
Well, she happens to be in our meeting, if you want to ask her.
Well, I, she will have an opportunity. How about that? Okay, great.
I, I actually, I've discussed it with them. They're, uh, they were lovely neighbors for four years. And so I, I walked them through the, the project and showed them this sound plan.
All right, well, we'll
Get their feedback.
Gladly hear their feedback shortly then. Okay. Is there any other questions? Go ahead.
I, I, I do have another one. So the property that this site's up to, or the garage will back up to is, um, two, two, six, nine, five, East Avenue. Uh, can you kind of just describe what this additional backup to? Is it uh, just so that it's on the record?
Sure. So the house of, uh, on the East Avenue house is actually much farther to the north. And everything behind number forty Ambassador is basically an open field and, and forest. So really there's no, um, there's no, uh, other building or driveway or playground or really anything behind here. It's just wilderness. And I believe, uh, my next, uh, the people at fifty Ambassador told me that at one point, somebody was trying to see if they could turn that into a flag lot. And that was denied. So I think we pretty much know that we're not going to have a conflict of another building hitting another building back there.
Okay, very good. Other questions, please? Okay, very good. All right. So at this point then, uh, is there anyone? And I think there is someone would like to speak related to this application.
Yes, hi, um, my name's Sally Constein. My husband and I, do you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my husband and I live at number fifty Ambassador Drive and have for twenty-five years. Uh, that is the next door to forty and, um, these two houses were built in nineteen twenty-seven. Number forty for the daughter of those at number fifty. There is rather an unusual relationship for homeowners of these two properties as they share a driveway and only, and it's the only one in this neighborhood.
Okay.
We respect Mr. Johnson's work and agree that the proposal to build the garage in the location proposed is much better than the non-variance option of building it closer to our line and in view of the street. Um, in the, uh, originally when these homes were built, garages were not to be seen from the street. That was in, you know, that was the way it was. Um, so they are small garages. Now, number forty's garage is going to be turned into a family room and they're going to add this garage behind it. Um, of course, I am not crazy about having green space disappear and having, um, a larger structure, but I would much, we would much prefer it to be in this um, location that needs a variance. Um, we, um, let me just see what else I have. Um, we hope that the driveway situation can be improved with this project, making the shared driveway situation better for both parties. Um, and on the, the point of the, um, the back of the garage, new garage being three foot from the, the line of the Wilt's house on, um, East Avenue. It was not their house that requested a flag lot. It was the next one over. They have very, very long, um, yards. And, you know, certainly it is, would be possible to have a flag lot. But, um, it definitely affects the piece of people behind them. There, th- there's nobody who uses that space that's behind number forty. It, there are some, so some scrub trees and there is some lawn. I haven't seen anybody on that part of the property in years. Um, so, um, we do feel that this is a large project for this, uh, this property. But, um, we do, we, the things that we are concerned about, we hope the architectural review board will look at, um, there's going to be some larger windows on both sides of the dining room. Um, and we just want to make sure that it blends well. Um, I don't, as far as the, 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 um, the setback, um, I, I can go out and measure while you're still in the meeting, but, um, I'm not sure how, where the line is from the front of our property compared with three foot further out on number forty. But I do understand what Andrea said that we want to make sure that it doesn't look out of place. I don't think it would look out of place. I'm not sure if they're planning on removing the tree that's in front of that window. If they're not removing the tree, you would hardly notice it at all. Um, and, um, I guess on the other parts of the, the project, um, yes, it's just wanting it to look as good as it can. Um, and, um, the people on the other side at number ten, um, they, you know, they were wondering what it was going to look like from their side, but it doesn't need, doesn't need a variance for their side. Um, because that's all I really have.
Okay, thank you for your, uh, thoughts. Appreciate it. Okay. Is there anyone else on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing's closed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay.
Application nine A O six twenty-one, application of Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC, we see an eighteen fifteen, excuse me, eighteen fifty W R S LLC, owner of property located eighteen fifty Witten Road South for an area variance in section two oh seven dash forty-two C one B to allow for the installation of cellular support equipment on the ground outside the building in lieu of inside the building as required by code. Also described in the application and plans on file.
Okay, great. So who do we have speaking for our friends at Verizon?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, great. Uh, thank you, Chairman, Board and Town Staff. My name's Nate Vanderwall. I'm with the Law Firm of Nixon Peabody, thirteen hundred Clinton Square, Rochester, New York, one four six oh four. Uh, also here this evening in connection with this application is, uh, Gary Ferrera with Tectonic Engineering. Uh, Gary and his team are the uh, real estate consultants, uh, engaged by Verizon Wireless in connection with this, uh, project. And I'm hopeful between the, uh, two of us, uh, and the application we've submitted, uh, we can address any questions that the, uh, board has this evening.
Okay.
Uh, just briefly to discuss, uh, why we're here. Verizon Wireless, uh, I know this board, um, and all the town boards are familiar with Verizon Wireless and, and their facilities. Uh, they are public utility licensed by the federal, excuse me, Communications Commission. Uh, part of that license is, uh, is a charge to keep a certain level of service within all of their licensed regions. Uh, one of them being, uh, this location, this, uh, cell, if you will, within the town of Brighton. Uh, Verizon currently has a facility located on the Jewish home at, uh, twenty twenty-one South Winton. They've been up there for quite some time, but in the process of renewing that lease, uh, we're advised last year that they would no longer, uh, be permitted on there. The lease would not be renewed. And they are, uh, required to find a new location, uh, to continue to meet the RF obligations within the cell. Uh, once that had been identified, they uh, conducted their search. All this is laid out in exhibit, uh, G of the application, uh, dated August ten, that's been submitted to the town uh, in this board. Uh, and ultimately, uh, we're fortunate to have found this location a- at eighteen fifty South Winton Road. The Genesee Regional Bank Building, right at the outset of this Cambridge office complex. Um, as a willing, uh, lessor, uh, they did the RF analysis and determined that this site, uh, a site located on the rooftop of this building uh, would in fact meet the RF need, uh, within the Verizon's network. And were able to enter into a lease, um, uh, with the bank for this building. Uh, the site as it's proposed, uh, involves a rooftop, three sets of a rooftop arrays of antennas. Under the town's code, these are permitted, uh, by right. They do not require a, any approvals beyond the building permit, given that they don't extend you know, a given height, um, above the height of the existing rooftop. The rooftop height, uh, and its location within the town's, uh, B, uh, B one district. However, um, despite their efforts to locate these, uh, the equipment, the necessary and associated uh, equipment within the building, um, they were unable to do so, uh, that set out in exhibit H to the application. Uh, therefore they were required to find an all exterior alternate location. And under the town's code, that requires an area variance, given it's not located uh, in the interior of the building. Um, again, referencing exhibit H, efforts were made to go inside. Uh, they were not able to find a location that, that was sufficient in size to um, to house the equipment. There's also an additional factor here that this is a bank building uh, with, which by, for obvious reasons restricts access to the premises. And Verizon requires twenty-four seven access to its equipment. Um, in the case of, uh, you know, a failure, um, the network going down. So again, in that sense, the interior, uh, location was not an option here. Uh, the rooftop was similarly not an option. Uh, it, at the landlord's direction, there were structural concerns with locating the equipment on the rooftop. And ultimately, and, and we felt fortunately, they were able to find an existing concrete pad on the southeast uh, side of the building. This is the rear of the building away from written, uh, Witten Road, um, really out of view, uh, from the access drive. Um, the access drive into the office complex, uh, to locate this equipment. And as reflected in the site plan that's included with the application, that is where they're proposing to locate that, uh, exterior equipment. So again, the rooftop equipment, uh, portion of this facility is permitted as a right. Uh, the exterior equipment, uh, ground level equipment requires an area variance from this board. Uh, and then upon obtaining or submitting the application, we're also advised by the town that given the project's location, Allen's Creek, uh, being within a water cor- course and floodplain protection district, that the project also required an EPOD permit. Uh, that additional material has been, uh, submitted to the town. We've been working with Ramsey, both, uh, myself and Costas Engineering, uh, who is the, uh, the civil engineers in connection with the project to get him the information he needs. And we're working through, uh, that process as well. Um, I, I understand there were some communications even as recent today that did confirm that the project, the improvements are located outside of the floodplain. Um, eliminating that concern on behalf of the, the understandable concern on behalf of the town. Um, and they are working to have those updates made, uh, to the site plan to confirm that. So it would be our request today that, uh, that this board issue the, the negative declaration for this project and approve the, the area variance, uh, set out in exhibit D to the application, we believe uh, we meet even the standard area variances, both under the code and the New York Town Law, uh, for an area variance. Um, to say nothing of the, the public utility standard to which Verizon Wireless is, um, is subject, uh, given it, uh, it's identification as a public utility. And in that sense, uh, pursuant to exhibit G has shown the need for this project and that, uh, the project as proposed will, will meet that need.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. All right. So board members' questions regarding this application? We can talk, Rick, you know, during the deliberation part about the uh, with floodplain situation and all that. But, you know, beyond that, is there any other questions, you know, related to why the location? I think Mr. Vanderwell explained it pretty clearly. It's about the most sheltered spot there that you could put some type of exterior application. So, so any other questions anybody has at this point?
I'll ask a question, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, was there any consideration regarding? Was there any consideration regarding screening of the equipment, either through fencing or landscaping or anything like that? You're not showing anything on this site plan, so.
Yeah, uh, I, I understand that was discussed with the land, uh, with the landlord, uh, with the building owner. Uh, given the natural, uh, buffer, um, both, uh, by the building and existing. Foliage, if you will, or landscaping, uh, already minimizing that location. Uh, but more, but even more so, given the fact that that, as you can see on the site plan, that, uh, butts up some windows on the rear of the building. And the landowner not wanting to obstruct that natural light in the view out those, uh, of those windows. But also being able to utilize that existing concrete pad and not having to increase any additional ground disturbance, uh, that was the reason. Uh, for not. Again, at the request of landlord, not proposing any, any screen, screening around that equipment.
Okay. All right, very good. And I guess the last thing anyway would be if you can just. Hold that one right, right there. Um, how about as far as just foot access? I mean, you, you have that parking lot that wraps to the rear and then there's a whatever amount of feet. From the corner of that parking lot over, or was there any thought of providing any way to do that? Versus walking through the grass in the winter time or whatever else?
A- as far as accessing the equipment?
Yes.
I, I, uh, that I'm, I'm not aware of. I'm, I'm not sure if there's any. Exterior, you know, entrance, ingress, egress, out of that side of the building or any, uh, walkway. I'm, I, I'm not sure, so I, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
I would assume, again, I mean, I would assume that if for, for Verizon's maintenance and, uh, emergency access. They would be comfortable with wherever that, you know, location is proposed, that they could sufficiently access it. And perform whatever, you know, service they need.
Yep, yep. Okay, okay, that's fine. I mean, I, you know, from our experience, I mean, with these, this, this is not a, like a very frequent. Access, you know, item. However, they might just need to bring a shovel sometime in January, February or March, but, uh, other than that, they'd probably be okay. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I just have one additional question regarding, um. Conduit along the building coming from the antenna down to the equipment. Are you going to bring it down and bury it? Are you going to just run conduit along the side of the building? Uh, how's that going to look and how's that going to be? You know, match the color of the brick or, or what?
Uh, I, I know there is conduit running down the, the building from the antennas down to the equipment. It is, it is typically standard to paint that to match the, the wall on which is mounted. I don't know if Gary i- is on this call, if he can speak to, uh, any more specifics on that.
There you go. Um, yes, most of it is going to be run underground and through the building. Um, it doesn't appear that anything is going to be exposed.
Okay. Very good. That's a great answer. Okay.
Dennis, for, for the record, I believe Gary will need to say his name and address.
Oh, sure, sure. I'm sorry. Yeah. Go ahead, Gary. Can you just give us your name and address?
Yes, um, Gary Ferrara, Tectonic Engineering. My office is. Four twenty-nine Lithia Pinecrest Road in Brandon, Florida.
Okay, very good. And how about a zip code?
That's a good question.
Ah, okay. Well, if you inspiredly get it, then you can throw it in. Okay. All right. Any other?
Exactly memorized now, but it's three, three, five, one, one.
Thank you very much. So we'll have a complete record. Okay, in case we're looking for you. All right. So, uh, what else? Any other questions? Okay, very good. So at this point, is there anyone in the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding eighteen fifty South Winton Road? Okay, and, uh, at this point, then the public hearing is closed.
Application nine eight oh eight twenty-one, application saved Monroe Avenue. Um, appealing the issuance of a building permit by the town of Brighton Building Inspector pursuant to section two nineteen dash three. To the Daniele Family Companies, developer of the Whole Foods Project located at twenty-seven forty, twenty-seven fifty Monroe Avenue. Also describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, very good. All right. So who do we have speaking for the applicant?
Good evening. Henry A. Zomerfeld, uh, on behalf of the app, uh, the appellant's Hodgson Russ LLP. One forty Pearl Street, Buffalo, New York, one four two zero two.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much. Um, as, as just stated, the appeal concerns the issuance of the third building permit for the Whole Foods Project. The permit was issued back in May of this year and it contemplates the construction of a building. That amounts to fifty thousand square feet in size plus an additional roughly thirty-three hundred square feet. For inclusion of canopies and a ramp. Uh, i- in short, the legal requirements of the town code have not been satisfied. And the third building permit should not have been issued. Uh, in our appeal, we raised three arguments. The first, that the development exceeded the size the town approved. And there was no elimination of the excess square footage, which violates the site plan approval. Our second, the development has been and continues to be constructed in phases. When the approvals expressly require single-phase construction. And the time of construction has exceeded eighteen months as originally contemplated and approved. And finally, uh, there's been a lack of consent concerning the cross actions, the cross access, excuse me, easements, which is required. Uh, to begin, I, I'll note that we're going to preserve points two and three. And, and just not reiterate them, uh, for the purposes of the oral presentation this evening. For the purposes of tonight, I'll address the first point as far as excess building square footage. The size of the building, uh, building three, as, as this permit concerns, was not reduced by the, the developer. And the town did not require any reduction in size, which is directly contrary to the approvals, the town code and the law. And as the board is aware, Save Monroe Ave previously challenged the second building permit. After the second building was constructed with excess square footage then contemplated. And the board took the position that the developer was actually allowed to do that and exceed the permitted square footage. Uh, recall that at that time, what was approved, it was twenty-two thousand three hundred and eighty square feet. And the second building came out to be twenty-two thousand seven hundred square feet. And the board's position was, the developer was permitted to do that and allowed to do that. So long as the overall approved square footage did not exceed eighty-three thousand seven hundred square feet. So based on that position, the developer had to reduce the size of another building. Which is the building that we're dealing with in building permit number three. But the developer did not do so. And the town did not require such a reduction in the square footage. So we're here, the developer sought, the town approved the third building permit for the construction. Which, as I mentioned, it's fifty thousand square feet with an additional three thousand three hundred and thirty square for the canopies and the ramp. And this is problematic because under the town code, as we outlined in our papers, section seventy-three dash twelve. Be express, expressly requires that follow with the approval of the associate planner. Upon satisfactory proof that the applicant is in compliance with the provisions, the rules and the regulations. As, uh, the comprehensive development regs. Only then may a permit be issued. But we know that there has not been compliance with the provisions, rules and regulations of, of the law. And we know that there's not compliance with the site plan approval, uh, which expressly requires that the developer meet all of the requirements under the town code. And the incentive zoning approval for the project. The project simply is not in compliance with the approvals in the law. And the town failed to require elimination of square footage for this building and this permit, which is in excess of what has been previously approved. And for the same reason, you know, the excess that was raised in the second permit, which I know has been addressed, but it adds context to this issue. Was similarly unlawful, as is this third permit. And we're going to ask that the board. Annull the determination approving the building permit and issue a determination. That the developer has not met all of the required conditions under the law, under the town code and under the town approvals. And this includes the first building permit, which required that all incentives, incentive zoning conditions be satisfied. That simply has not occurred. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, board members. Question for Mr. Z here.
Dennis, if I could just jump in.
Yes, please go right ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I was trying to, uh, get in there. My mic was muted and I had.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see a wave with it. Okay, go right ahead.
I was waving frantically.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
That's okay. Um, I, uh, I did want to note a couple of things, um, for the board as.
Could you, Ken, just, excuse me one second, just in case anyone's listening, could you just kind of introduce yourself to the Zoom audience here?
Happy to do that. Ken Gordon, Town Attorney.
Thanks.
Um, so, uh, what, um, what I wanted to say first is, uh, we do have. A new board member this evening, Heather McKay, who is not participating in this. Public hearing and will not be participating in deliberations. Uh, regarding this project because, uh, there is a conflict of interest that exists for her. So, uh, she has turned off her, um, video and, um. Muted her mic and is not part of the board for the purposes of this public hearing or this matter. So I wanted to note that for the record. Um, secondly, just, um, and I think, uh, Mr. Zomerfeld did a nice job of, uh, of covering this. But I did want to just give a brief intro, just to say that this, uh, challenge, um, to the planners issuance of the building permit. Is in large part, well, I should say in two-thirds part, exactly, uh, two of the same issues that we've seen before. The, um, issue regarding the phasing. And the issue regarding the cross-assess easements, both of which this board, uh, overruled and determined were not sufficient to. Set aside the building permits for buildings one and two and, um, the court, the State Supreme Court, D. J. Oderesi, agreed with this board. Um, on those two matters. And then the third matter, as, as he mentioned, has to do with building size. This one is different. The argument here being that, um, although the town board and the incentive zoning resolution authorized building three. To be fifty thousand square feet, the argument is that, um, that building should have been less than fifty thousand square feet as proposed. So that's what's before it. I just wanted to sort of set the table, uh, for the board in terms of what this is. And then I guess the last thing I wanted to ask, um, Dennis was, um, I think I heard, uh, Rick call. This matter nine eight oh eight twenty-one. We also have nine eight oh nine twenty-one, which is an identical, um, appeal. Um, are we holding these public hearings jointly or separately?
And I was just going to ask you that, whether or not we should, at this point, if Mr. Zomerfeld is done with his presentation. Call nine eight oh nine, let them present anything in addition. And then, um, the board can ask the applicants their questions. And then we can bring up anybody from the audience who would like to address the board, uh, basically addressing both applications together.
Yes, we can do that, but I think we need to make Mr. Zomerfeld's comments part of the record for both public hearings. So that his comments, and for that matter, my comments are made part of the record for both the public hearing. And nine eight oh eight twenty-one and nine eight oh nine twenty-one. I don't know if there will be a separate presentation on nine eight oh nine twenty-one, but if there is, um, Dennis, I'd ask that you call for that now before.
Yes.
We get into.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the record should, you know, indicate, and this is very common for us to do with applications such as these, so I don't think there's really any. Anything.
That's all, that's all I had right now. Thanks.
Okay, great. Okay. So I guess back to you, sir, do you have anything in addition that you would like to talk about? Yes. You want to call it first?
Yeah, why don't I call nine eight oh nine now?
Yeah, that's fine.
Continue on. Um, application nine eight oh nine twenty-one, application of Brighton Grassroots LLC. Appealing the issuance of a building permit by the town of Brighton Building Inspector to the Daniele Family Companies, developer of the Whole Foods Plaza Project. Located twenty-seven forty, twenty-seven fifty Monroe Avenue. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, let's back to you then, sir.
Thank you. I, I just, two brief points a- and I'll conclude, um, one is just, just to make clear for the record. And I know this, this will be the case momentarily, um, the, the Brighton Grassroots application, though, though similar. I will not be addressing counsel for, for Brighton Grassroots. We'll be speaking on that. And just to Mr. Gordon's point, as far as, uh, the, the court's, uh, decision to uphold. The prior determination that Justice Oderesi did so. While we respect the court, we do disagree with that decision and, and are exercising our appellate rights in that regard. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Uh, unless there are any other questions, we'll rest on our submission and I thank, uh, the board for, for its time this evening.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm just, this is number right, just wondering if it's better to wait until after Brighton Grassroots gives their presentation as I imagine.
Yes. No questions, yes, sure.
Right, let's, let's wait until after and have the presentation on nine eight oh nine twenty-one by the petitioners.
Sure, sure. And then we can have questions on both applications. Okay, so who do we have speaking for Brighton Grassroots?
Good evening. Mindy Sawclen from the Sawclen Group, three hundred State Street, Suite five oh two Rochester, New York, one four six one four. I represent Brighton Grassroots.
Go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. Yeah, this is an appeal from the building inspector's decision to issue a building permit for the Whole Foods Store. The appeal involves three issues, as both Mr. Zomerfeld and Mr. Gordon explained. We have phased construction, the cross-access easements. And that the Whole Foods building should have been reduced in size to compensate for the excess square footage. That the building inspector granted for building number two. As you know, our issues are identical to those raised by Save Monroe. So unless the board has any specific questions of me, uh, Brighton Grassroots will rest on its submissions. And join in the arguments made by Mr. Zomerfeld.
All right, that's fine. Okay, so let's go back then and Andrea, did you have some, a question for either of these folks?
Either or both.
Okay, well, go right ahead and I'm sure they'll decide who can answer.
Sure, Mr. Summerfeld, you made comment, um, both in the submissions and then also in your presentation. That the fifty thousand square foot building should have been reduced. My understanding is that there's two more buildings that could be reduced in size. So can you just explain or Ms. Sawclen explain, um, why this building needs to be reduced and not the other two? In order to comply with the overall square footage for the project.
And a deference to my colleagues, since I, I'm happy to address the question, but, but I'll first ask Ms. Aglin if she, she wants to address it initially. Uh, only because I did a majority of the speaking the first time around.
Sure, I'm ha- I'm, I'm happy to, Ms. Wright. Um, you know, the issue here really is that. The, um, the other two structures have been granted approvals. Um, and we fully expect that, um, the applicant, the developer here will construct the buildings as approved. Or come back to the boards and seek modification of the incentive zoning approval, the site plan approval and secret review that was already done. So, you know, unless it's, so it's, since it's more likely that they're going to proceed as approved. Um, consistently with the, uh, the requirements and, you know, hopefully in, uh, consistency with the. Requirement that they build this plaza all at once, that the. Reduction in square footage ought to be taken from the next building that has been approved and issued the building permit.
And, and I'll just, uh, I, I'll just chime in and say, and then I know we didn't address this and we rested on our papers in this regard. But this is also part of the problem a- as to the, the phased construction. Um, i- if this was done as a single phase, as was contemplated and approved, the developer would have to adhere to the approvals. Given by the town, but instead by, by phasing it, the developer is essentially getting a second bite at the apple, albeit unlawfully. To continue to erode what has been approved and basically cherry pick which buildings he wishes to. Uh, increase in size and then, uh, seek to reduce size of the next building. Uh, and, and consistent with, uh, the prior determination, uh, albeit that we have on appeal. That they would have to reduce the size. Ultimately, they have to reduce the size and this i- is what has been approved. And this is the building it should come off of in light of those approvals. Otherwise, by doing it in this manner with the phased construction, we, it's just going to be on to the next building, on to the next building. The town needs to ensure that the approvals are upheld and that the law is followed here. And, and we should not be giving any additional chances or passes, uh, to the developer in this regard.
All right. Andrea, any follow-up?
Ed, so, but just to confirm, if they applied for the other two buildings and did reduce their square footage, you would not have an issue with square footage. You're not arguing that this square footage is more than permissible. It's only in light of the fact that they need to reduce the square footage on a building in the station or in the project.
Right, and it should have come off of this building. That is the argument.
A- a- and just, the argument is only because it was the next one approved?
Yes. And because the other two buildings are expected to be built a- as approved.
Okay. All right, other questions for either of these folks? Other board members, any other questions?
I, I just, I just want to point out one thing. Um, you know, i- the, the building is contemplated here as fifty thousand square foot, but don't forget square feet. But don't forget, there's also this additional three thousand three hundred thirty square feet for these canopies and ramps. So, um, that already is, is beyond what was contemplated. So let's not forget, you know, size, you know, a- as, as was approved, as was contemplated, is particularly relevant here for this building. Uh.
Uh, if I could ask a question, this is Edward Primo. You're not bringing an appeal about that.
No, but I want to point out why it's important that we adhere to what's been approved, just as Ms. Soglin has said.
Well, I mean, but you're not challenging the canopy and the, the other areas.
No, not, not specifically.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions, board members?
Yeah, this is number right again, and just to make sure it's, it's clear for, for myself, but, and, and hopefully clear if, if not clear for the rest of the board as well. Um, one of the original arguments was that in order to comply with Brighton code, the building permit had to match exactly with the, um, with the building permit issued had to match exactly with the site plan as approved. This seems to be migrating a little bit to only that it can't be more than. Is that accurate, that that you're not arguing that each building has to be exactly the square footage that was approved on the site plan, only that it can't be more than what was on the site plan, each individual building?
I want to make sure I understand your question. So you're, you're saying that i- in your view, our argument is as long as it's equal to and less than, it's acceptable. Is, is, do I, have I gotten your question correct?
Right, well, that, that's what I'm, I guess, for each individual building, because obviously there was an appeal of one of the buildings being, uh, larger in square footage than what was approved in the site plan. And, and the argument was that it had to be exactly what was a, the site plan, otherwise it didn't meet code. I just want to confirm that that argument is now, that as long as it's less than what's approved by code, it's okay, it just can't be more.
Ultimately, your argument is there needs to be, i- if the square footage was approved, in the amount that was approved, that what is what needs to be adhered to.
Yeah, i- if I may jump in here, I mean, that was not an issue that was raised in any of the Brighton Grassroots appeal, o- only, uh, Save Monroe raised that, but my understanding of what happened during that appeal is that the ZBA rendered an interpretation that since the overall approvals permitted eighty-three thousand seven hundred square feet, that it was not time to challenge the, uh, fact that building two was constructed in excess of the permitted square footage.
Or, or not the permitted, but the, the, what, the square footage that was listed on the site plan.
No, it was permitted. It was permitted by the incentive zoning resolution, by the site plan approval, and was specifically evaluated in the secret review.
Yeah, that's, that's not an accurate statement, Soglin, and I think you know that, that it was not specifically referenced building two square footage in the incentive zoning resolution. But this building, building three, that, that square footage was, in fact, specifically mentioned as fifty thousand square feet. Not less.
All right. Um, very good. So, other questions for anyone related to this application? Okay, great. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for the presentations. And at this point, then, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding either of these two applications?
I would.
Okay, please, uh, go ahead.
Uh, good evening. Uh, once again, I'm Ramsey Boehner. In this matter, I'm the associate planner, uh, for the town. And I first would like to start off by thanking the zoning board of appeals for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight in opposition to the third appeal regarding the issuance of the building permit for the project. And it's important for you to know, as always, your time, effort, and consideration regarding this matter is greatly appreciated. Um, the Town of Brighton issued the building permit in accordance with the applicable laws, regulations, including the requirements of Town's Comprehensive Development Regulations and all approvals issued by the Town Board and the Town of Brighton. It's alleged that the town's failure to require the elimination of square footage from the Whole Foods building to compensate for the excess square footage of building two violates the approval of the site plan and the prior approvals. This is unsupported by the record and applicable town approvals. As a condition of the town board's incentive zoning approval, the maximum building development on the property cannot exceed eighty-three thousand seven hundred square feet, and the Whole Foods building cannot exceed by fifty thousand square feet. There was never a restriction put on building two. That is clear. And, uh, that's just not right. That's a wrong statement. The towns confirmed that the developers' calculations for the gross square footage of building one at fifty thousand square feet complies with the site plan and the town's prior approvals. To date, the town has issued three building permits authorizing the construction of Starbucks building at one thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven square feet, building two at twenty-two thousand three hundred and eighty square feet, and the Whole Foods building at fifty thousand square feet totaling seventy-four thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square feet. The current square footage is well within the maximum project density of seven, eighty-three thousand seven hundred square feet as conditioned by the town board's incentive zoning approval. It's also really important to note that the town has not yet issued the building permits for the last two buildings shown on the site plan. It's really important to make clear, the town will not approve building permits for the last two buildings in excess of nine thousand three hundred and twenty-three feet, and that the overall squirrel footage of this project will not exceed eighty-three thousand seven hundred square feet as required. The applicant in this matter notes this very clearly. I have spoken to them, and we do keep track of this. We have a system, and we keep track of it. The last matter I'd like to address is the three thousand three hundred and thirty square foot for the canopies and the ramp authorized by the building permit. Our architectural projections, as we previously, as discussed in the previous appeals, architectural projections and other elements are not part of the building permit, but are in the addition to the building footprint for the purposes of generating the permit fees. Therefore, as referenced in the building permit, the fifty-three thousand three hundred and thirty square feet area is compromised of, comprised of, excuse me, of fifty thousand square feet building footprint and thirty-one hundred square feet of canopies and, and a two hundred and thirty square foot ramp. Based on the review, analysis, calculations undertaken by the Building and Planning Department, the towns issued a building permit in accordance with applicable laws and regulations, including the requirements, the Town Development Regulations, the Incentive Zoning Resolution, the Site Plan Approval. Accordingly, as you can probably tell, I strongly believe that the request for this appeal should be denied and the building permit upheld. There was never a restriction on building two. I want to say that. Once again, and that is just wrong to say that. I'm sorry, that just very much upset me, that there's misleading information. Once again, I would like to thank the board for your time, the effort regarding this matter. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Mancuso if he has any closing remarks regarding our opposition to this third appeal. And I would once again, thank you all very much for your time and consideration, as always.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so it, it does, is there someone else that would like to speak regarding this application, please?
Uh, yes, Chairman Metz, this is John Mancuso of the law firm of Weaver Mancuso Brightman P L L C, one fifty Allen's Creek Road, Rochester, New York, one four six one eight. Um, I will be brief. Um, I know this board is intimately familiar with this matter, having heard this is the third appeal of an issuance of a building permit. Um, to briefly, uh, just memorialize our points on the, uh, issues presented on two and three. Um, we would simply ask that the board adhere to its prior determination with respect to the second building permit and find that those two issues are procedurally barred by red judicata and collateral estoppel. It is an identical issue that is now the, the third time it's been before this board, and we'd simply ask that you adhere to that determination. With respect to, uh, the Whole Foods building square footage, um, just to briefly echo the sentiments of the Town Building Inspector, there really are four, uh, simple, uh, points, uh, that I will, that I will make with respect to that. Number one, the incentive zoning resolution a- as a condition requires a fifty thousand square foot building. Number two, the site plan similarly depicts a fifty thousand square foot building. Number three, as presented and submitted in the building plans and as certified by the developer and as is in the record before this board, is a fifty thousand square foot building. SMA's counsel has conceded, uh, during the public hearing that they are not contesting uh, the canopies and the ramps associated with that building, and so what we have is a fifty thousand square foot building footprint, uh, which is identical to all of the town's approvals that require a fifty thousand square foot building for building number one. And finally, uh, the overall project density is currently below eighty-three thousand seven hundred square feet as articulated by the Town Building Inspector. Um, the argument is not appreciating that there are two additional building permits that have not yet been issued for additional square footage, and as the building inspector has reiterated, uh, the overall project den- density will not exceed eighty-three thousand seven hundred square feet. Uh, and so with that, uh, we would otherwise rest on our submission unless the board has any questions. Um, and I would like to disclose by saying that we would, uh, I would like to confirm for the record that, um, Mr. Boehner's comments and my own be made a part of the public hearing, uh, record for both SMA and BGR's appeal.
Okay, Mr. Mancuso, thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Zomerfeld, here's, here's the situation here. If you have something else to add, I, I will allow it, but, you know, we, we're not interested in a debate between what's been said, because in the public hearing, again, it's the board's responsibility to listen to all the testimony that's been given and sorted out. So if you have something additional to add, then, uh, please proceed.
Thank you very much, and, and I, I respect that, Mr. Chair. I'm not looking to engage in, in cross-debate. I just want to clarify for the record, because I did misspeak, you know, I, I was, one of the board members asked about our challenge as far as the canopies and the ramp, and I was referring, I know. And I, I was also taking a look through while everyone else is speaking. I, I want to retract that statement, because I see it's very clear in our submission that that was raised, so I, I, I want to withdraw that and clarify that we will rest on our submission. As to that, it was raised in, in multiple, uh, places in our, in our papers, and I, I don't want to concede that we're not challenging that. I, I think it is an issue, and I'll, I'll defer to our papers in that regard, so I just want the record to be clear.
Okay, very good. That's reasonable. All right. Thank you. You're welcome. All right, now, is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, very good. At this point, then, the public hearing on nine eight oh eight and nine oh eight oh nine are closed.
Everyone, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, very good. Uh, go ahead, Rick.
Well, you have some old business. Public hearing, we do have an old business item that we closed the public hearing on last month. Um, I don't believe we need to reopen that hearing unless anybody would care to.
Yeah, the, the only thing I had, Rick, is, um, the communication rece- received from the applicant's architect. Do we make sure that's included as part of the public record? That was, that was after the hearing.
Yes, I think, um, yes, um, yeah, that, that will be in the file, um, and, and that's a good point. We can make sure it's part of the, of the record.
Okay.
Um, so besides that, if you guys don't feel the, to need any explanation regarding that, I believe we should go on to decisions or take a quick recess, Mr. Chairman, if so desired.
If we could, before, before we move off of, of that request by Mr. Primo, um, this is on application nine eight oh three twenty-one. Could we just have a simple, quick motion to, um, add the, um, email correspondence from Jeff Ashline of Mosenee, uh, dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and the attached drawings to the record, uh, for the public hearing on this matter? Go move.
Okay, and a second, please?
Second, number right.
Andrew, okay, very good. All right.
All mem- all members in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Members opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, very good. Okay, does anyone need, uh, five minutes here? Or shall we proceed?
Ollie, are you okay?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right. Well, then, let's proceed then. Okay, so, the first application relates to nine oh nine North Landing Road, uh, for the Trinity Reform Church. So, does anyone have concerns related to this application?
I'm a hundred percent good. The only question I have is, sometimes when we do these types of deals, we ask to see copy the easement agreement. I didn't see that in the file. Is that something we would normally request? Or is that more of a planning board requirement?
Yeah, I, I believe it's really more of a planning board issue.
Okay, then I'm good.
Basically, we're just dealing with a setback issue, not so much where the.
Reasonable, reasonable point, though, yeah. Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any other concerns here? I have this one, so. Okay. So, uh, at this point, I move, we approve application ten eight oh one twenty-one based on the following findings of fact. One, while the variance is self-created, there is no opportunity to separate the adjoining lots without a variance. Two, the request of forty-one point seven one feet on the side setback is the minimum relief necessary to create a legal or create two legal lots. And three, no changes to the property will occur with the approval of this variance, since the other setbacks will remain and the structures will be unchanged. And four, no negative effect on the character of the neighborhood will result from the approval, since the property will remain unchanged in appearance. Conditions, this is based on the testimony given and the drawing submitted as relates to the subdivision of the two lots. And Rick, you're going to tell me what requirements they have. I know planning, obviously, but.
Yeah, I think that basically at all necessary, planning board approval shall be obtained.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second, please?
Schwartz, seven.
Thank you.
The motion is to approve with conditions, Mr. Primo.
Aye.
Ms. Topkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. McKay, drewry?
Aye.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Mr. Mikes?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions, hearings.
Okay, very good. All right, so next we move to Brookline for the porch and garage additions.
Yeah, this is, oh, member Schwartz, this is mine, and I would feel more comfortable tabling it for more information. I think in the past, we've approved things without really good drawings and knowing what we're approving and have not always been happy with the result, so I'm, I would move to table this.
All right, well, let's kind of go around the room and see what everybody else.
Hey, Dennis, this is Ken, just as a procedure, as a procedural matter, and I'm sort of a procedural stickler, Judy's made a motion to table. Um, we need to know if there's a second to that motion to table. If there is a second to motion that, second to that motion to table, a motion to table is actually not a debatable proposition. It's something that you need to take in.
Yes, correct.
Well, okay. Well, okay, so then you know what? I can withdraw my comment, okay? And then that would give others a chance to give their opinion, and then we can go.
You're not actually making a motion to table, you're just thinking maybe the board would like to
There are questions in my mind, yes.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Okay, well then, we've procedurally corrected it then. Okay, sorry. So let's kind of go around on this, and Judy will let you speak last. How's that? All right, all right, Andrea, what are you thinking?
Yeah, so it's interesting. It's not where my mind was going, but I, I don't necessarily disagree with Judy. Um, in part because certainly this project will still need to go to the architectural review board. But part of our a- approval language will be that because, I would assume language would be that because this porch is open and appears, you know, less substantial than, uh, a full structure, that's why it doesn't change the character of the neighborhood. It's not detrimental to nearby properties. That is harder to do without a visual representation of what this porch will look like. Um, that, that would be my greater concern of the porch because it is such a significant part of it in the front yard setback. Is that where you were kind of thinking, Judy?
I have a question too about what the garage is gonna look like. I mean, you talked about a gable, but it's really coming forward. I also have a problem with garages coming beyond the front of the house, which this will. So I just want to see both, you know.
Yeah, so just clarification, in other words, okay.
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Mr. Primo?
Yeah, I, I guess as far as the variance application, I, I felt comfortable with it. I mean, there is A R B that could take up a lot of these issues. Um, as far as the criteria for the variance, I think they've, they've met it, and I'm sure A R B, uh, would make sure it looks nice.
Okay.
And just to, to piggyback Ed's comment about the architectural review board, we could make a condition to this that says that it needs to be open construction and, you know, that's conspicuous, or some kind of language, and then let the A R B deal with it.
Right, but part of our charge is to say, will it change the character of the neighborhood? I don't really have a problem with the porch. I just want to know what this, to me, this garage is gonna hit you smack in the face, and I just really want to know what it's going to look like before I personally say yes. So, yeah.
All right. Okay, so, um, so let me just chime in here. So, I, and I, I understand um, the concern that, that Judy has related to this, because again, there's varying levels of understanding. The architect, uh, freely admitted that he did not create elevations for the front of this. You know, due to the sequential approvals that the client expected him to do, so, um, for the purpose of clarification to understand it, then yes, we do not have that. So I guess really what it relates to is, you know, do the other board members feel the explanation he gave are enough to, you know, feel comfortable with this?
Hey Dennis, I, I don't think we've heard from Ms. McKay yet.
Yes, yes. That's fine. Well, let me finish first, and then
Yeah, oh, okay, I just didn't know.
Yeah, we're just going, uh, oh, no, I don't always go last. I was just kind of going along. I didn't forget Heather, so. All right, so anyway, um, yeah, so I think it's, that's my feeling is just that, you know, being a construction person myself, I, I, I'm okay with the explanation that I was given, but I can understand other people's acumen might be different. So, okay, Heather, go ahead, please.
Um, I'm coming down on the same as, uh, member Primo. Um, I believe that, uh, creating that multi-dimensionality of the front of this house um, will be more aesthetically pleasing. Um, it's stark to begin with in terms of the, um, it, the two-story. I think that, given what we know and the explanation that was given, I think that that's what they're going for is, um, have adding, adding a porch and a single-story, um, garage in front will create that aesthetic interest. And in addition, as, uh, member Primo noted, um, I believe that the A R B is going to sufficiently handle, um, more of those aesthetic questions. So in terms of the encroachments, I think that those are very minimal. Um, the porch, it really has to encroach, otherwise they cannot have the porch, which I think will be aesthetically pleasing. Um, and the area of encroachment with respect to the garage is very minimal. Um, and the only alternative was one where it would kind of be at an angle, which I think would actually be, um, more odd-looking.
Okay. All right. So Judy, you, you have the last verite here.
I still personally would table it.
Okay, all right. So this was your application, Judy, so.
I know.
Yeah, and you know, we, as you know, we, if the rest of the board, it sounds like, Ed, I guess we'll just have to pull it a little bit. Ed, would you be willing to support this application at this point?
Yes.
Okay, and Andrea? You're muted, Andrea.
I, sorry. Um, yeah, I don't have any problems at all with the, the garage, and as long as we put in uh, condition regarding the porch, I'm good with that as well.
Okay, all right, okay, and Heather?
I'm good with it.
Okay, and I'm, I'm actually good with it too. Okay, so would someone be willing then, because Judy don't want you to feel conflicted here, so.
Thank you.
Would someone else be willing to make this motion? Do you work on it, Andrea, please?
I, sure. I move.
We'll help you, we'll help.
I move to approve application ten A dash O two dash twenty one. Uh, uh, James Culver and Christina Culver, owner of property four O one on Drive. Um, all is described in the application and plans on file based on the following finding fact. Number one, the granting of the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. A detriment nearby properties. Uh, the garage extension into the front yard setback is minimal in nature, as it only represents a small corner of the garage. Period. Further, the proposed porch is open nature with only a roof. And thus will not appear to materially, uh, infiltrate the front yard setback. Number two, the requested variance is not substantial, given the limited increase in setback with the garage and the open nature of the porch. Number three, the benefit sought the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other me- method. Uh, as any addition of a porch will necessarily violate the front yard setback. And number four, there is no evidence that the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Conditions, number one, the area you're in applies only to the garage addition and proposed porch, as picked in the plans and materials submitted as described in the meeting. Number two, the proposed porch shall be, uh, open in nature uh, in order to minimize the visual effect. Number three, all necessary architectural review board approvals and building permits must be obtained.
Okay, very good.
Any additions?
Oh, I think you got
Go ahead, Ken, hold on one sec. Go ahead, Ken.
I, I wanted to just, uh, add to it that the, um, variance request was not self-created as the, um, home was cited on the property, uh, by the original builder of the home and not by these owners.
Ollie, that would be, I think, the fifth finding of fact, not a condition.
Okay.
Yes, correct, a finding, thank you.
Are you okay with that, Andrea?
That's fine. My voice got a little deeper while I was saying it, but yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, all right.
Real quick, though, Ken, that finding isn't required in all approvals, is it? I thought that was a, um,
All understood.
Yeah, it's for use variance, you can kill use variance, but not
Yeah, but not in there, you, you can't deny an air variance based on that.
Right.
Alone.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Uh, so how about a second for this amended? Yes, go ahead, Ed.
I got it.
Oh, thank you. I thought you had a comment, sorry. Okay, very good.
This is to, the motion is to approve with conditions, Ms. Schwartz?
No.
Mr. Mikes?
Yes.
Ms. McKay, Drury?
In favor.
Uh, Mr. Primo?
Yes.
And Ms. Topkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Thank you, Andrea. Okay, so now we move over to forty Ambassador. This relates to the garage addition at the beer, and then the three-foot front addition. So concerns here by any of the board members?
I mean, it's certainly, it's, it's not that you can't say it's not substantial, given the fact of where it is and what it encroaches on, but, you know, it, it's certainly very close for an attached garage to that rear property line.
Okay, and you're, what, what is
I'm okay with, I
Okay.
I wrote it up as an approval. This was my application. I wrote it up as an approval. Um, I, I have some fancy language for why it's not substantial, but
Very good. Can't wait to hear it.
But, um, it, it is a larger variance request than many of our variance requests.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Okay, all right. So, go ahead, Ed.
No, I was just saying, I think, I think that's true, uh, but once again, this is, I think there's unique circumstances with the properties that, that, um, justify the, the variances. Um, and you know, perhaps if it wasn't such a unique situation, maybe I'd be more concerned, but I am not here.
Okay, very good. All right. Heather or Judy, any thoughts?
I think they're being very sensitive by, by maintaining a single or shared driveway for the Constantines next door. You know, by, by putting it behind the house, where, you know, so I, I think they really gave up a lot of serious thought and, um, came up with a very good solution.
Very good. And Heather?
I agree. I think that the shared driveway, um, makes it particularly difficult and, uh, justifies the, uh, more unusual, uh, setback that, that, uh, they're proposing here.
Okay, yeah, and I, I, I agree. I think that, you know, the situation here is, and you, you heard from the neighbor who's mostly affected by this, the appreciation for the placement. So, um, I think, again, as was pointed out here, the respect for the property, the property owner, and all the rest seems to be made. And then, you know, when you look down the street, I think the points about the front yard setback in our legitimate, there's a, quite a difference in both size and scale of the houses on Ambassador, so I think this three-foot is gonna be relatively, you know, un- unnoticed, really. Okay, so.
I appreciate pointing that out earlier that regarding the size, because I was struggling with the, the setback a little bit, so that's helpful.
Okay, great. All right, so Andrea, you're up.
Sure. Uh, I move to approve application ten A dash O three dash twenty one of Tom Johnson and Mark Benoit, owner of property located at forty Ambassador Drive for area var- variances. All is described in the application and plans on file based on the following findings of fact. Uh, number one, the granting of the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The garage addition will not be visible from the street and encroaches on an area of the backyard that not back up to any structure, but instead backs up to open fields and a treeed lot. Further, the placement is specifically designed to reduce any maneuvering issues within the shared driveway. With respect to the front yard setback, the additional variance of three feet will not be noticeable in comparison setbacks throughout the neighborhood. And in particular, given the size of homes in the neighborhood, and this home being one of the smallest in the area. Number two, the requested variance is not substantial, given the fact that the garage would be permissible in this location were at a detached garage, and it appears to be a location that reduces effects on neighboring property owners. Further, the three-foot extension in the front yard setback is minimal in light of the overall size of the building in comparison to neighboring homes. Number three, the benefit sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any method as the family is in need of additional space on an otherwise constrained lot. With respect to the attached garage, other configurations, including a detached garage, would be detrimental to neighboring properties. Number four, there is no evidence that the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Number five, the need for the variance is not self-created as the home necessarily violates the front and rear yard setbacks as there is only less than a ten-foot space of allowable building between the setbacks. Conditions, number one, the variance granted herein applies only to the additions as presented in the application and bill submitted, as well as the presentation. Number two, unnecessary architectural review, uh, board approvals and building permits must be obtained.
Second, Schwartz?
Okay, great.
The motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. McKay, Drury?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Mikes?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Topkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, our next situation is over at eighteen fifty Wynton. Uh, either Ken or, um, Rick, your, your feelings about the relationship to this EPAD and all the rest?
Yeah, um, they do need an EPAD permit, and seeker does need to be performed on this. Unfortunately, when they made this application, they did not give us enough information to do seeker or to issue a administrative EPAD or possibly, um, referring it to the planning board. So I think at this point in time, it would be a little premature for us to, um, approve it not knowing whether or not they would get the EPAD permits and what, um, kind of seeker determination would be made. However, I think it would be beneficial, um, if we at least were able to give some idea of how we feel about this variance.
Yeah.
Certainly, yeah, certainly if you are not in favor of it, there's nothing preventing you from denying it.
Okay, all right. So, well, let's just go around, just quick, quick. Ken, did you have anything to add to that?
I agree with Eric. Now, Rick and I talked about this earlier today, and we're in agreement.
Okay, fine.
What, what, what is it that we, you need to do the seeker determination?
The EPAD permit, the Environmental Protection Overlay District permit would require seeker approval. Would require a, a, uh, determination of significance.
Okay, so that is, the EPAD permit is issued administratively?
Either administratively or sent to the planning board, depending on the impact of the, um, project on the specific EPADs.
What, what about the testimony that they gave that the actual location is outside the flood?
Well, we would certainly like to verify that.
Right.
While we were to.
Yes.
Well, I, I think that's of course a big point.
Yes.
It's, it's not, yeah, it's not that, it's not that this is necessarily how do I put this? This is a triple negative almost. It's not that it's not going to get a negative declaration. It's simply that, um, we don't have enough information right now to make that determination or to issue the EPAD permit or to know whether it's gonna be done administratively or not.
Right.
So, basically, there, they need to flesh out these issues a little bit more, and, you know, staff has to have an opportunity to review.
Yeah, I think we could characterize it as, at this point, incomplete. So, okay. Is there any of the other board members have any other thoughts about this, or do, do, you know, generally, I, I mean, are people reasonably supportive of what's being asserted here, subject to obviously these matters being cleared up related to the EPAD? Anyone?
Yeah, Judy, aside from the EPAD, I think that they really worked it out.
Yeah, Judy, aside from the EPAD, I think that they really worked it out. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we've had other applications like this, haven't we, over the years? Yeah. So and I think that they really took into account of placing them really out of the way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. And does anyone else have any thoughts about just that? Yes, Ed, go ahead. I'm sorry, Ed, were you trying to speak?
No, no, I'm I'm um.
Okay, so Jeff.
I'm supporting it.
So to to give Verizon the just a general idea that we really don't appear to have any significant issues related to either the placement of the equipment outside uh, in the particular location that was asserted and uh, the rest of that part of the discussion. Okay. All right, so I think at this point, then it's my motion. I think the right thing to do here is to table this motion, you know, for the additional information and staff's ability to uh, review the submissions and and also clear up the seeker issue.
Uh, my question, my question to the board is that would you want to hear back from them once we have made a determination and um, whether or not the EPAD goes administratively or to the planning board? What I'm trying to say is, do you want to keep the public hearing closed on our end?
I do. I I don't think I need to hear any more testimony from them.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, I I think that's reasonable. Yeah, I would.
So we will table it, keep the public hearing closed.
Yeah, we need a second for my motion, though, please.
Well, let me just.
Go ahead, hold on.
Yeah.
I did second it.
Second. Okay, but we're tabling it for um, seeker determination.
Right.
And also EPAD permit approval.
Yes, okay, yes, yes, that's pretty much what I said, yep. Okay, so now we had a second for Mr. Primo.
The motion is to table. Keep the public hearing closed. Uh, Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Miss Tompkins right.
Yes.
It's McKay Drury. Mr. Mites.
Yes.
And Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Motion to table carries.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay. So on the next two applications, I think we can talk with, uh, as we did earlier with them together. Uh, but obviously we'll vote on them individually as we need to. Uh, all right, so Ken or or um, excuse me, Rick, do you have any thoughts before we talk about this?
Uh, I might, I just preliminarily, um, I will say that with each of these Whole Foods uh, appeals. Um, you've given me the opportunity to draft some specific findings after hearing what direction generally the board wants. So I I would benefit greatly from hearing your thoughts. Um, but then I would ask that um, you allow me uh, a month to get the findings written up. Um, so that we can have adequate and specific findings made for this matter.
Okay, well, there's certainly precedence for that, so I can say that.
I I I guess Dennis, this is one I was gonna take the lead on.
Sure.
Um, and and I agree with that. I I I mean, once again, I would based upon our other determinations um, be in favor of denying both of these appeals. Uh, I will say one thing is when I, I've been sitting here scanning through the appeals again, and I don't really see the basis for there being some sort of appeal over the canopy. So I I the fact that that was retracted, I think it's just wrong, but that's that's.
Um. What what do you feel is wrong? I'm sorry, Ed, what do you mean that it's wrong?
I don't think they raised the canopies in this appeal.
Okay, correct. Okay, so I just wanna make sure clarifying that everyone understands what you meant. Okay.
Yeah, just just to point out what I saw, I did see that in the SMA um, submission. Uh, I will say that I did see reference to the square footage of the canopies. Um, it is called out. Uh, give me a moment here. Um. On page. It's here, cuz I saw it when you mentioned it.
Okay.
But I I don't know if mentioning it was. Right, I just wanna make sure that our record is clear that here we are. Um, on page twenty nine of paragraph one hundred and ten. Um, the statement is the developer did not remove any square footage from the Whole Foods building for which the town issued the third building permit allowing for a fifty thousand square foot structure, the same size approved by the town board and town planning board. Plus, an additional thirty three hundred and thirty square foot for canopies and a ramp. Now, they don't make the argument that that in any way violated the approvals.
Right.
Um, and and I think that's your point, Ed, um, and I would, I would concur that they don't make that point.
Okay.
But I just wanna make sure that that there isn't um, a notion that they don't mention the thirty the thirty three thirties.
Can't, they do. They, you, I mean, you can read through the both those appeals. And the conclusion you would reach is there, the basis for their appeals has nothing to do with the canopy and the uh, ramp.
Right. Well, I think that's reasonable, but.
I think that's a fair statement.
Yes, okay.
You have a question of um, for information purposes, is there ever a limit on the allowable square footage of these canopies and extra additions and so on? I mean, can they keep going over the top or is there some guideline or whatever?
So it's not within the definition of the square footage of the building. It's to the exterior walls is, we define that in the code um, that the measurement is to the exterior of the walls. That is what we got um, a computer assisted uh, design certification on for building number three is that it was exactly, as a matter of fact, fifty thousand square feet. Um, as measured um, under a computer assisted design program.
I. Ken, I think your question really relates to like, could they have made them three times as big as this or some other arbitrary size of these canopies? So Rick, maybe you could address that quickly.
Well, I I don't think the incentive zone had ever contemplated architectural features. Um. And if they were going to do something so outrageous to a canopy that goes into the parking lot, I think that could violate the site plan approval. But that's not what's going on here. There there definitely canopy areas that um, are protecting people from the weather or adding architectural um, features to the building. The handicap ramp certainly is not um, is necessary, so.
Yeah, they would, they would really have to be compromising the fire lane or impeding on losing parking or something, so that would catch all of that duty, you know.
That's well stated, guys. So. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, so from that, um, any other questions or clarifications that the board members would like at this point or other, uh, you, I don't think we heard from you, your thoughts.
Other can't, we can't hear.
Mother. Oh, I apologize, that's right.
Others not even listening, I'm sure.
That's right, I apologize. Okay, all right, so is is there anything else then?
Well, I I'll just, I mean, what I I heard from them is that the the major issue is that they don't trust Brighton to force a reduction on future property, not that they have really a problem with this property being fifty thousand square feet. I think that in and of itself means we, I I don't know how to not deny their appeal based on that, based on some your potential wrong that they think is going to happen.
That hasn't, it's not occurred, right?
Okay, and I tried to point this out, cuz this was, again, this was their first appeal on build on the Starbucks building. Um, I believe it was on the Starbucks building on the exact square feet. When we went into detail, because they believed they viewed that the square footage had to be exactly what was on the site plan being proved. And this fifty thousand square feet is exactly what was on the site.
Yeah.
Pro. Um, it's it's hard to have it both ways.
Right, okay.
Just for clarification, Starbucks building, they did not challenge.
It was the second.
Oh, I'm sorry, building number two. Sorry about that.
Yeah, and it was, you know, let's face it, it was a pretty exhaustive discussion about that, both from both sides of it, that the board members were, you know, party to listening to, so, okay.
Judy, you you had an issue on on building number two. I I mean, do you have a similar issue here with building three? I'm curious.
I feel a little bit better with this one, okay, um. You know, as long, I I mean, I I asked my question about the the extras and so on and so forth. And is there going to be a limit? I can certainly understand things that would be more ground level, you know, that would interfere with parking and so on and so forth. But can they, you know, put something way up around the top and so on that goes way out and you know, wouldn't interfere with the parking lot?
I think we addressed that adequately, I think, Judy. You have no, there's really no concern with that, really.
Okay, there's so there's no limit, okay. I do thank you, Ken. I do feel a little bit better because this one is more unhypothetical than actual, which Andrea just mentioned, so you know, that that clarifies it a bit more. Thank you.
De- Dennis, I would like to move that we table this.
Yes, go right ahead.
The work on the resolution and take up a vote at the next uh, ZBA meeting.
Ed, can I have you do formal tableings of each application?
Yes, you gotta do them and just, I'm sorry, just individually, just say nine eight oh eight.
I move that we table application. Oh, my gosh.
Nine eight oh eight?
Nine eight oh eight and nine eight oh nine.
Okay, well, Rick, I think you wanna just take seconds for those and then just just vote on them individually?
Yes.
Okay.
We're on them individually.
So how about a second for nine eight oh eight?
Again.
Andrea.
Right.
And then nine eight oh nine?
Second, member right.
Okay, very good.
The app uh, application nine eight oh eight twenty one, the motion is to table, keep the public hearing closed. Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
And Miss Tompkins right.
Yes.
The motion to table carries. And application nine eight oh nine twenty one, the motion is to table, keep the public hearing closed. Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Miss Tompkins right.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
The motion to table carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so the last application of whole business is um, thirty six Eastland. Again, you were provided some additional materials. Uh. So what are the thoughts here? So how about Judy? What do you think?
I drove by again, and I didn't realize this first time around. But the neighbor's drive, uh, garage, I'm sorry, is right next to this proposed, uh, next to the existing garage. And I I don't think it's going to be in keeping with the neighborhood. I mean, it's gonna be really much larger, taller and so on, so I don't think I am going to approve it. I think it's gonna really change things.
All right. Uh, how about Andrea?
So I am planning on abstaining from this. I was not part of last uh, month's board meeting, so I will not hear the testimony and unfortunately did not have room in my carry-on luggage to bring the minutes with me, which is why I abstained from approving the minutes as well. So I would hope you have the votes without me on this application.
Uh, Ed? Well, you got it, yours, Ed, I guess.
I've been out there a couple times myself. I guess I I have a different view than Judy does about whether it would be in keeping with the character of the area. I don't think it's going to be particularly any larger or taller, as I recall, than the next door garage. They're gonna move it over slightly. Um. To to take better advantage and a- add some access. I think the architect's discussion of why the additional three point five feet made sense uh, was was persuasive to me. Um, and I note that when I had talked to the property owner uh, before the first hearing, he had mentioned, you know, the desire to put on the the solar panels at some time in the future. Um. You know, the the garage that's there needs to be replaced. And I I really just don't have a problem.
Yeah, all right. Now, Heather, you didn't hear this one either, correct?
Correct. I, to the extent that I'm permitted to, I do feel like, especially with the additional information that was provided, I I think that that, it sounds like that um, echoed some of the testimony that was provided at the meeting that I did not attend.
Right.
With respect to the um, intention to potentially install solar panels, that explains the angle um, that's required for this and given the fact that um, the adjoining properties have two car garages uh, similar to this and that it would be um, minimally visible from the road. Um, I feel that I do have enough to to indicate that I I am inclined to approve this.
Okay, okay, very good. Yes, and that's certainly reasonable. You know, if you viewed the property, reviewed the, yes, you certainly are well within your purview to do that. And I I'm kinda sitting in the same thing, cuz I was not here last month either, but I did review the property, did review the extra things, and I really don't have a concern either, so. Okay.
Well, the issue is, there's, there's four of us who can vote right now. Right?
Correct.
And Judy, you're thinking of voting, no?
There's, there's five of us that can vote.
Right, right. Andrea is just saying she would have.
You know, yeah.
Oh, I thought Andrea said she was going to abstain.
Yes.
Well, she can.
Yeah, she's eligible. She's eligible.
So the question is, we have a three one, we had a three one last month. Um, at some point in time, we have to make a decision for this applicant. I don't like, you know, stringing them along one way or the other.
But if we take a three one vote, it's a no action.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're all.
We had a no action last month also.
Yes.
My point is, I'd like to one way or the other.
Yeah. Okay, well, Andrea, what's your?
And under, an idea of what the board's doing.
Okay, hang on, Rick, for one sec. So Andrea did.
I guess, is there, cuz I don't even have the minutes with me to even review them right now, so. Is there an opportunity? What's the board's temperature on? And, you know, I know we don't normally take comments from applicants at this stage, but on tabling it for another week, I can leave the minutes and then be prepared to vote next week on it. Or I'm sorry, next month on it, because I don't feel, I do not have any of the documents for this application. I do not have the minutes. I apologize. That was my fault in my travel packing, but um, I don't feel like I can vote on this one without reading through the minutes and looking at the application. Uh, but I'm perfectly willing to table it for another month and and in the that I will likely align with those. I I assume, given the three one vote, that I I will be comfortable as well. Uh, I don't know if the applicant's temp, but the board's temperature is extending this another month.
I think we're gonna have to.
Yeah, it sounds like it. I don't think we really have too much.
Yeah, we really don't have a choice.
Yeah.
I move, I move, given the the number of members that can vote and so comfortable voting, I would move that we once again table application nine oh three two one to the next meeting. That the public hearing remain closed. Um. And hopefully we can reach a decision at the next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay.
Motion is to table the application. Ms. Schwartz.
No.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury. Heather.
Uh, yeah, I I guess I'm in favor.
Yeah.
I feel bad. I feel bad.
Yeah, I know, well, that much remedy here, really.
I'm not, I mean, is it possible for us to provide documents right now? I know Ms. Wright is.
I think it'd take a lot to read the minutes and I I I don't wanna, I don't wanna force a member to have to
Right.
put them on the spot like that. I really don't think it's fair, so.
Yes.
Um, I think we tabling it is the proper thing here.
Yes.
I think we're, I think we're in the middle of a vote here.
And we're in the middle of a vote.
Right, go ahead.
So um, Ms. Tompkins right?
Yes.
To table.
Yes, to take, yes, table.
Yes. And Mr. Primo.
Yes, to table.
Motion to table, the application is approved.
Is. Okay, I didn't wanna jump in there in the middle of that, but um, I will say this is one of the great advantages to doing these meetings virtually is that the entire record and hearing is now recorded and available on video, so I know that that's not gonna help for last month, but going forward, I mean, it's. So I know that that's not gonna help for last month, but going forward, I mean, it's it's a huge help to have this available.
Yeah.
Sure.
Kathleen was not here tonight. She could, you know, watch the entire meeting and be.
Sure.
Everything.
Uh I'll I'll speak with her about it, too. And then just, Ken, do you have, excuse me, do you have any thoughts about how you're gonna proceed on the other issues? Will you be getting some materials to board members prior to next month's meeting or what's your thought?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Right? Or was that to Ken or was that to me?
No, that was to Ken.
Oh, well, I'll answer for Ken anyways.
Okay. All right. All right, I think we're good. Thank you, everybody.
Um, everybody good for next month, November ele- uh November third?
Same stuff.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be virtual again, right?
Yeah, at least, at least, uh Jan, at least November, December, and we'll revisit it in January.
Okay.
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 Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Hi, Judy.
Can I?
Good night.
Thanks, Everett.
Take care. Holly, you're muted.
Yes, all right. Just a quick question for you. Um since we're back to virtual, uh do you, in the deliberation section? Do you want all the discussions and everything back in?
Yes, we have to do that.
Yep, no, no problem. Just wanted to double check.
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you. Have a great night.
You too.